Okay, please settle. 67th Regular Session of the 20th City Council is now called to order. Invocation by Honorable Counselor Yan Lam Lim singing "The Lupang Hinirang" and "Kagayan di Oro March". Please rise.
May Hapon Vice Honorable Jocelyn Rodriguez, atong kauban sa buhat at mga bisita sa gallery may Hapon sa tanan. Let us pray. Dear Lord, we thank you for the wonderful day you have given us. Together us all here in our session hall, together all plans for the betterment of our beloved Kagayan di Oro. To continue serving your people as public official and being the voice of every Kagayanos. As we are about to tackle things this afternoon, continue to guide us, protect us, and be with us. Let your wisdom be upon us and inspire us to be, go beyond and to always have courage to fight for the people of Kagayan di Oro. We continuously pray for the welfare of every Kagayanon. Guide and protect them also that they may be always safe in their day-to-day lives. We are also praying to those who are sick, to heal them and touch them with your healing hands. To all those we went back home to you, please guide and protect their loved ones that they left in the world. Lord, we are doing nothing without you. You are the Lord of all lords. You are our protector and please continue to keep us safe in your loving arms. We live everything to you, Lord. As all this, we ask in Jesus' name. Amen.
Mga kababayan ang Pambansang Awit ng Pilipinas. Tayang magiliw, kadas nasira hanan. Palaw ng puso sa diti ko'y buhay. Lupang hinirang, kuyatan ang magiting. Sa manlulupi, ikapasisitin. Sanagatang putong sa sipayan, salamikaw pa raw. Ayunatang tula kaowin sa kaya ni na mahar. Ang isakang wa'tawat, mui'tan kuay, arake nite. Ang pituin at palaw ng kayda, ang hayda at itinig. Lupang apalaw ng war, habikwat si kah. Kuyagan it sa pinigong. Amen. Ika'yan na pa, kayo na bi. At malay na, ka'yusay.
Please, besided. Mister Secretary, please do the roll call.
Honorable Jocelyn B. Rodriguez, City Vice Mayor and Presiding Officer for the First District Councilors, Honorable Gepito Roberto Giswan, Honorable Roger Abadai, Honorable JR Pasqual, Honorable Aimy Rose P. Moreno, Honorable Romeo B. Calizo Unlib, Honorable George Isgokking, Honorable Jose PPS Abu Junior, Honorable Malburn E. Espasia. For the Second District Councilors, Honorable Ivuna Yasin B. Imanu, Honorable Maria Lordes Isgaani, Honorable Jolynn Mercedes Elbalaba, Honorable James K. Judith II, Honorable Ian Mark Nakaya, Honorable Edgar S. Cabanlas, Honorable Christian Rustico M. Atchas, Honorable Suzette G. Magtahas Daba. For the Ex-official Members, Honorable Yan Lam S. Lim, Ligan ng mga barangay President, and Honorable Kenneth Jan Disacala, City SK Federation President. There is Corom, Madam Presiding Officer.
Corom is hereby certified. Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon. Our guests were here today, our friends from the media, those who are watching us right now. Fellow Kagayanos, mayong hapon, ka natungtanan. If I may, can we start our, what you call this, our session at 2:30? Is that okay with you? 2:30? Kakaulaw ko kay sa'yo kay si Majority Floor Leader, Nana Shadere. And the House Rule says it's 2:30 PM. Is it okay sa inyo? Huh? Okay. Okay, so we will start at 2:30 PM every session. Okay. Good afternoon, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas, you have the floor.
Thank you very much, Honorable Vice Mayor Bibut Rodriguez, our Presiding Officer, Members of City Council, Kagayan di Oro, our friends in the media and our people, Kagayan di Oro, who are witnessing this session of this anggoyan panglumshod. Madam Chair Me, I move to dispense the reading of the minutes of the previous regular session of this council on January 22, 2024.
Any second? Objection? Abi lang ko question pato. Abi ko kamapato, majority?
Oh.
So it's a ready statement. So any second? Objection? I hear none. Motion is hereby carried.
Move to approve and second final reading.
Any second? Objection?
Madam Chair, before we proceed with our special report portion, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya intimated to the Majority Floor Leader that he is raising a point of collective privilege. And would like to request that the Honorable Presiding Officer recognize Counselor Nakaya.
Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer and to the Majority Leader, Counselor Cabanlas. If the Vice Mayor so desires and the members of the council, I understand that the Pambansang Awit video clips have shown practically the past previous officers of the council and there are new members of the council. We have the new SK Federation President and the freshman date of the ABC President and new setup of the entire membership of the council. Maybe perhaps we can take another shoot.
Yeah, actually, Counselor Ian, we just took the shoot just now with the Counselor Sakala, no?
Diliko ready.
Ah, dil, ayaw-sa. Wala ka na kabarong. Anyway, he was the only one. If you want, then we can do for the entire.
Yes, that would be better.
Okay, so let's do that. So the next session, everybody should be wearing barong or the black and tie, okay? Actually, gikwaan na lang namukaron lang si Sakala. But if you wanted a new one, they will do it, okay?
Better, better.
So what's the pleasure of the house? Mapagwapo mo next?
Maybe we can schedule another.
Yeah, for the next session.
For the entire shooting.
Yeah. So, so wear your barong, your black and tie, okay? So thank you very much, Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, yes. Please proceed, Majority Floor Leader, Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. So, in the special report, Madam Chair, there are about four Members of City Council who would like to render special reports. First, Counselor James Judith Asteboto.
The second one?
Second one is me.
Okay.
Yeah, I would like to render special report on the condition of our Lagindingan International Airport.
Okay.
And second is Counselor Abadai about pay parking and jaywalking regulations. And lastly, would be Counselor Sakala regarding National Bible Month, Week and Day Celebration. So considering that Counselor Judith is not available, I will proceed.
Okay, sure. Okay, you have the floor, Majority Floor Leader.
Madam Chair, we have been traveling to parts of the country and we always take the plane. And binisay ungunalan. Siyempre, usar man atong airport and diya magitan mo sa kaysa Lagindingan Airport. And Kagayan di Oro is the port of entry of Mindanao. And we are supposed to be, in fact, the fastest-growing city in Mindanao, I think, is Kagayan di Oro. So, nganuman nahimong magitan nga very fast-growing ang atong economy, it's because nakanatugin ang tenan potential of being a good city. Apan ang atong airport sa Lagindingan, muragulang maka supply ni anak ng demand. Wato kita dito, binag mga kath mga alas 4, alas 5, alas 6, puno naking airport, ngoban diya na, diwa-dwa na'y malingkura, nimo. Grabe gikayo. Unya ang atong mga facilities, like for example, ka ng carousel. Bisaganin ka ng mga kanatungga baklayon paing sa plane, thermak. Ha? Sa thermak. Backlit outside ya. Na may reba ug kaduul, layo. So, kung imung tanawan ang kondisyon ko, is atong international airport, supposed to be, it's already been the best international airport in Mindanao. For me, it's already been better than the airport of Davao. Pero wala, kita bisa wat giteka kuikiwi, labina gisa airport sa Sibuk. This is the common complaint now. Dear airport of Kagayan di Oro or Lagindingan, should have been improved many years, many, many years ago. The capacity of our present airport cannot answer the present demand of our passengers. In the planning of construction or building an airport, there should be an advance estimate of 50 to 100 years. But here, ang estimate sa KaAP, sa KaA o sa Department of Transportation and Department of Transportation, DOTC and Communication. Now, ibu taltab, 20,000 capacity or 200,000 capacity in a year. Pakahuman sa airport, ang atong airport needs additional 20,000 capacity. Pero lagi, na imang estur ya nga i-expand ang atong airport. Pero wala, wala, wala kita nakita karoon improvement sa atong airport. It's chaotic. Ah, bisanganin ka ng atong mga kanatong maginspixon sa atong mga baggage. Layo riki kayo. So, Madam Chair, I would like at the end of our session on other matters, pass a resolution urging the Department of Transportation and Communication and the Civil Aeronautics Administration to fast-track the expansion of our airport so that we can, we can at least ma-level na to ang atong growth sa demand, sa transportation, sa Kagayan di Oro. Munang akong di hangyo, Madam Chair, nga pasuntang ini, jilik sila maglang ilang, ngaikay. Grabe niki kayo ang demand sa passengers karoon sa Kagayan di Oro. Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas. Yes, you have the floor, Counselor Aimy Moreno.
Yes, Madam Chair, tagang salamat, mayong hapon and to sa akong mga kauban sa City Council and to our guests, mayong hapon. Actually, I do believe that there has been an aggressive plight sa ato ang mga Kongresista, no? We have Congressman Rufus Rodriguez and Congressman Bambi Imanu. I've seen that they have been fighting over this issue with the DOTR and sa committee level. And I agree with our Majority Floor Leader, no? Hey, maybe ang ato ang resolution can help to cater the needs sa Mindanao, labina ang Lagindingan International Airport. That is all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Counselor Aimy Moreno. Any more comment? Yes, Attorney, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer. Good afternoon to all the Members of the 20th City Council. Just in addition to the statement of Counselor Moreno, the President himself, President Bongbong Marcos, have posted in his social media accounts and allow me to read this, Madam Presiding Officer. He said that "We have approved upgrades to CDO's Lagindingan Airport for sustainability and economic recovery alongside changes to the Rapid Growth Project for rural development and job creation." So perhaps also the manifestation of the good Counselor, the Majority Floor Leader to entice the Department of Transportation to, aside from the efforts of our representatives, we can also call them and the hope though to fast-track as well the calls for the immediate expansion and development of the Lagindingan Airport. Thank you very much, Madam Presiding Officer.
Thank you very much, Counselor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, Counselor Edgar Cabanlas and Counselor Ian Mark.
I forgot to mention, Madam Chair. A second resolution would be requesting the sanggoyang palalawigan ang misamis oriental to support our this resolution. Because after all, Lagindingan is part of.
Yeah.
Madam Chair, two resolution, city and the province of Kato, misamis oriental.
Yes, thank you very much. Counselor Ian Mark Nakaya, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer and to the special report of Counselor Cabanlas. Indeed, a real concern, Madam Presiding Officer, because we are already overtaken by several giant airports which in the first place, we have established first prior to the expansion of many airports like, for example, the Bakolo Iloilo, Madam Presiding Officer. So we were overtaken by this and airport can catapult a city or province into an investment hub. If, for instance, we can have international airport, it's only a matter of 10, 20 meters of the runway for it to be converted into an international airport. But until now, there is no information that would relate to us that there is indeed a change and development of the programs for the Lagindingan International Airport. I would like to suggest, Madam Presiding Officer, that our Public Utilities Committee will also handle the discussion so that we will have intimate discussion with the KaAP, with other agencies relevant to the development of our airport. Because we would like to inquire whether this airport will be converted into something modern, something relevant to an international standard that would apply flights from Lagindingan to perhaps Hong Kong or to Macau where Counselor J was few days ago.
Oh.
Or.
Ah, I didn't know that.
Macau, gigan siya sa Macau. Lamin niyang chocolate. Anyway. Ah, let's reveal all, Madam Presiding Officer.
Okay.
But even Malaysia, Singapore, to start with, Madam Presiding Officer, and with the two resolutions that have been proposed, we also engage in the discussion, Madam Presiding Officer, at the committee level.
Okay. Refer to the Committee on Public Utilities, Counselor Romeo Calizo with KaAP and the rest of the resource persons. So any more comments? Yes, Counselor Agasuan?
Thank you so much, Madam Chair. Just for an information, Congressman Bambi Imanu of the Second District of the Province of Islamis Oriental is actually aggressively lobbying the Lagindingan Airport to become an international one. So every time we meet, he always mentions that. So I believe that the Congressman of the Second District of Missore, Congressman Bambi, is actually doing something with regards to the upgrade of our Lagindingan Airport. So even though the process is still very slow, but rest assured that he is doing his very best to actually convert it into an international airport, improving its standards, Madam Chair. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Agasuan. Is there a groundbreaking, I understand? Not yet? Karagimbiter namang ko. Joke-joke. Anyway. Pakatawar agani. Anyway, our next speaker?
Our next speaker is supposed to be, the first speaker is supposed to be James.
Yeah.
Counselor James Judith, but because he was not around.
Yeah.
So he has to stay at the last. So the next speaker would be. Kuya Abadai.
Counselor Roger Abadai? I would like that you and you do the privilege speech shortened. Okay, everybody, not referring only to one person, Counselor, but to everybody.
I'm sorry, Counselor Judith, I was pronounced ahead. That's the price of being late. Thank you very much, Majority Floor, for being kind to me. And thank you also very much to our Presiding Officer, Vice Mayor Bibut Rodriguez, my colleagues in the 20th City Council, our listeners from online and in the gallery. May Hapon sa tanan. As already advanced by Majority Floor and other colleagues about Kagayan di Oro. Kagayan di Oro now is becoming a metropolitan and the hub of industrial and commercial establishment. And it is also known as a livable city. So in order to maintain this prestige, there is a need to enhance the functionality of our city, especially in the urban areas in our city. So it is imperative that we have to address the prevailing challenges in our city today. What is this? The traffic condition. So, na tay problema sa mga airport, na putay problema dinis sa Kagayan di Oro. Although our normal city mayor is already high expert in order to manage our traffic, but we will not leave alone. There is a need the participation of all pedestrians and commuters in the city of Kagayan di Oro. Now, nasayot tanga, usasa nakahatak o problema gud sa atong trapiko. Kaya ang atong dalan, labina dinis sa urban centers, walaki mausap, narong, moragapon ang kala dun. Then nagdagan ang sakyanan, nagdagan ang sakyanan, nadagko pagod. Nanatay mga PUBs, basa gabiyahi, nadagan ang tricycle. So, problema kita sa trapiko. So, if we go around the city today, labina karong mga orasa, grabe na atong pagawaan mo sa city, wala na problema na. So, another problem is kiniging disiplina sa tao, contributori ginisakwan sa atong trapiko. Bisa gini, nanatay mga pedestrian lanes, gigastuhanan na sa gubernu, lato sa sudan, giguwan diya mga streets, pero amataw asam wagih, ditur, mabubu, magbuot sila kulingon. Nanatay overpass, alsa ricto, sekarat gasa, inivero, pero that people da pas, aragapon sila lumsa overpass. Nanatay islands, island satu, gigan saricto, payo sebulo, or where else? For what purpose that, for safety and para nga street and flow sa atong trapiko, pero lukat, na kayo busirbani, mudaan mga tao, mula bay, ubedih, mua, jagin, wagih. So munangya contributori sa atong trapiko. Another, ang atong mga dipasero, ang atong mga private driver supervisor, parking lang bisagasa, unya, ang gini mo pasero, kapasay, batipama sairo, mataksi or PUB, POJ, magbuot sila, magbuot, ang pasero mua magbuot. But you cannot do that in Manila and other places in Sibuk. Di gika parahan dito kung upara ka sa, dili sa dropwinds or kwan, or taxi di kapala ob, ditos Manila, dimor. So, wala, kinalan taong disiplina, kinalan taong hanay kayo ang atong pakpedagan sa trapiko. Now, dunan atay mga balaud, 1996 pa, gining jaywalking, 1996 pa na approve, panahon pa manini, Mayor Magtahas eh, or Mayor Imanu, Mayor Imanu. Nanatay mga pay parking, pay parking ordinan sa mga designated areas, but these are durman, durman, natulog nga mga balaud, which is very important. So I want to resurrect this, Madam Chair and my colleagues, by reimpositions of this ordinance. This will not only help, this will not only economically help our city and our establishment, but this will also make a big help to ease our traffic problem. Abi ni mo tanan mga nadagang kayo mga establishment karong reklamo, na wala na ilam mga customer, gadi man maka parking, di naman maka like drugstores, mga mall, mga podchains, or tanan. Wala, ano, ang mga mula gina, mua magbuot, asasila mo parking, wala'y limit sa time. So, para pag sulbad to put an end of this problem that contributes our traffic, I am proposing to this honorable Members of the City Council that this ordinance under ordinance 10102, 2006, and this ordinance, under the codified ordinance, gining pay parking, jaywalking, should be implemented, re-implemented, Madam Chair and my colleagues, and I would like to refer this to the Traffic Committee and direct. Madam Chair and my colleagues, and I would like to refer this to the Traffic Committee and direct the RTA to drop the proposed areas, the proposed penalty or fine kayang nabutang dini, barato paggyayokan 1996 pagod. So lili na kayo appropriate, por kan, diliman ingon nga mangnegusyo ang Sudan sa Kageyan di Oro, but that will be used for maintenance and enforcement of this ordinance para nga, hapsay og hanay ang atong trapiko dinis sa atong Sudan sa Kageyan di Oro. I think this is one of the solution. And there are other, there are other ways, but this will be one of the solution that will ease our traffic problem in the city. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Councillor Roger Abadai. So we will recommend to the Committee for review. Public Utilities, hapun. Yeah. I understand this is groundbreaking for the pre-departure area in Lagindinan soon. Formal invitation will be, this is a pre-departure area, so just waiting for the invitations. Tino'odilito joke joke. So that is a good, that is a good sign that they are doing something, no? Especially for the passengers. Anyway, our next speaker?
Councillor Sakala.
Okay, Councillor Kenneth Sakala, you have the floor. This is your first time, feel relaxed.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Majority Floor Leader. Madam Presiding Officer, esteemed colleagues in the City Council, public servants, fellow Filipinos, good afternoon. Unknown to many Filipinos, the Senate and the House of Representatives of the Philippine Congress, assembled in their 17th Congress in 2018, made a laudable act in relation to the development of the moral character and spiritual foundation of the Filipino people, known as the Republic Act Number 11163. This act declares the last Monday of January every year as a special working holiday in observance of National Bible Day, or known as the National Bible Day Act. Today, therefore, Madam Chair, being the last Monday of the month of January, we are celebrating the 6th National Bible Day. And this act declares that it is the policy of the state that the government shall aid and encourage development of the moral character and spiritual foundation of the Filipino people. It further states that, as a predominantly Christian nation and the largest Christian nation in the Asia-Pacific, this act recognized the value of the Holy Bible as the core of Christian faith. The last Monday of January and every year thereafter is hereby declared as National Bible Day, and proclaimed the same as a special working holiday. Many of us, including this humble representation, are new in the leadership positions. We have just assumed leadership roles in our respective assignments. Many of our constituents in the city have just begun taking their steps forward toward their desired progress in life form, in life from the dreadful pandemic. Students are still adjusting from our online to in-person classes. And in this new beginnings, let us remind ourselves of Joshua in the Old Testament, who took over the leadership after the death of Moses. As he was about to bring the people to the promised land, God told him as recorded in the Holy Book in Joshua, Chapter 1, verse 1 to 9. And Madam Chair, I firmly believe that what God said to Joshua is timely for all of us, as we embark on our task in bringing our constituents of this beloved city toward the realization of their dream for a promised land. A better future, a better tomorrow, and let us allow God to speak to us again through the Holy Book today. Let us be strong and courageous in facing the challenges of our time. Let us allow the Word of God to guide us in our ways and to correct us when we go astray. Let us try our best to live out what is written on it so that, just as we got, just as what God promised to Joshua, we too will be prosperous and successful in everything we do. Madam Chair, just as our national leaders have recognized, as it is inscribed in the Republic Act 11163, the value of the Bible as the core of Christian faith, and that it is a helpful instrument towards the development of the moral character and spiritual foundation of the Filipino people, let us then allow this Holy Book to be part in our leading this city towards greater heights. Let us hope and believe that God will be with us in doing our task and in fulfilling our goals. And Madam Chair, in celebration of the National Bible Holiday, the United Church of Christ in the Philippines, UCCP, located along Abellionosa Street, the church where I belong, is sending its gift of one box of New Testament scriptures from the Philippine Bible Society for anyone in our offices who may wish to acquire a copy of this Holy Book. So to everyone of us, Happy National Bible Day and thank you and God bless.
Thank you very much, Councillor Kenneth Sakala. Happy National Bible Day. A very good report. And hopefully this serves as a lesson, no? Dili na lang tanan sa atong privilege spaces about anything, about problem, but then, yeah. Thank you very much. Is she, is she, no, not requesting for energy, okay, thank you.
That's a good report from the Sanggungiyang Kabataan.
Yeah, the first report is a very good report coming from the youth.
Coming from the youth.
Yeah.
A good example of a good kawad. Madam Chair, we proceed?
Okay, let's proceed.
We proceed with Councillor Judith.
Councillor Attorney James Judith, you have the floor.
Sa atong halandong Presiding Officer, Madam Joseline Bebaut Rodriguez. Majority Floor Leader, Councillor Edgar Cabanlas. Akong tinahod ng mga kauban sa konseho, atong mga bisita, mga gingsakpan sa prensa. Ang tanan nga mga naka maabot sa atong labay or signal, ma-traditional or social media, sa inyong tanan.
Dilina orin.
Wala na may orin sa ato sa kabutan.
Wala na, orin silin naong.
Nagreact ang ako naong orin. Maninoy.
Dilipakatawar. Blue na, blue. Bago na. Okay, proceed, proceed.
Madam Chair.
Hinaya, hinaya.
Madam Chair, ang atong barangay, mo'oy pinakabatakang mga elemento sa atong pangagamahan. Mo'opun ni ang una nga, gining makita nga guberno, diha sa ato baling tagsatagsa ka-komunidad. Mo'opun ni una nga masangunan, sa tanan nga mga yungo or reklamo sa atong katauhan. O'kopun ni una nga madangpan, sa tanan nga mga batakan nga kikinalan sa atong katawan. Dilipun malalis, Madam Presiding Officer, nga, pinaagis sa pinakabakong teknolohiya nga tawag na'to nga internet. Mo'oy ni resulta or ni bunga sa gitawag na'to nga social phenomenon, mo'ning gitawag na'to nga social media. Alayo ni ini, makita na'to, na tungod sa social media, nausap ang dagan sa atong kinabuhay. O'tanan, aspeto ni ini, apil na ang gitawag na'to nga gining pagdumala sa atong guberno. O'nakita na'to, nga pinaagin ni ini, matup pa sa usak kapanuntihon, nga nagkanayon, the power of social media is that it forces necessary change. Matup pa. Pinaagin ni ini, pinaagis sa social media, mapalapad na'to, o mapalawom na'to, ang atong pagpadagan sa atong guberno, pinaagis sa dua ka-prinsipio, ang gitawag na'to nga transparency in governance, iha'g nga pagdumala or proseso sa atong guberno, pinaagis sa atong mga pisales, mga kadaguan. Ngah, ilan ipahibalo, ipaabot sa ilang tagsatagsa kamagin sakpan, kung unsa ilang gibuhat, samtang sila ng atong tanan. O'k, katungod po, sagitawag na'to sa atong katawan, nga, maki-marites, maki-sayod, maki-susi, kung unsa kaketabo sa ilabaling barangay. Kininadayon, dini nga pamaagin, mo'sumpay den tas, eka dua nga prinsipio, ang gitawag na'to participatory governance. Kay, kung ang katawan, masa'od kung kanunay, kung unsa kaketabo sa ilang barangay. Na'aduna sila kaikad, mo'salmot, mo'apel, mo'tambong sa tanan nga mga keliukan sa ilang barangay. Kay saan nga pamaagin, makita nila, nga ang gining pagtambong nila sa nagkadayang mga keliukan sa ilang barangay para rang mangyapon sa ilang kayuhan. Bu'sa, kita mismo, dini sa konseho, pinaagis sa staff ni City Council Secretary Boss Torres, ang atong Ika 19 nga konsihal. Ang atong mga proseso dini, ang atong sesoon, gina-transmit man, or gitawag na'to, live feed, or gitawag na'to nga, live broadcast, pinaagibali sa internet, or FB. Ngah, ang atong mga interesado nga mga representante sa nagkadayang media outlet, pwede lang sila mo'slice, pwede lang sila mo'tunin dito sa atong web page, or pwede sila mukuha diya sa atong gitawag nga press pool. Munang, alayo ni ini, dagdasun ako kaganina lang, amot wala daw at naba ni mo' Boss Torres. Kagana lang, sa usak kasugyot balao nun nga mahimong mandatory requirement, sa atong tanan nga 80 ka mga barangay o SK. Ngah, sa pag-transmit or live broadcast sa ilang mga sesoon, himo'un na'to ni nga mandatory requirement, usa na'to pag-aaprobahan ang inang tagsatagsa kamga budget. Kinalan, adun ay pagpakita, pagpatuman, nga ilan gituman ang mga pipila kamga provision sa atong sugyot balao nun, nga adun ay pag-transmit or live broadcast sa ilang mga sesoon. Karoon pagpakita sagitawag na'to nga transparency, or iha'g nga pamaagis sa atong guberno. Inanilang, at this juncture, Madam Chair, I therefore move that this matter be referred to the Joint Committee on Barangay Affairs chaired by the good Councillor Alam Lim, who also happens to be one of the authors of the said proposed ordinance, and Youth Affairs chaired by one of, by our young and dynamic SK Federation President in the person of Councillor Kenneth John Sakala, who also happens to be one of the co-authors considering that it involves the SK. Nasa katapusan nga bahin, Madam Chair, inanilang, akong pagpaambit sagitawag na'to nga panuntihon, yapon, nga nagkanayon. Social media and technology are not the agents of change. They are just tools. We, the connected people, are the agents of change. Dininilang kukutob, dagang salamat, o'k asdang Kageyan di Oro.
Hinaya lagi. Okay. Councillor, thank you very much. Councillor Gurli Balaba first, then Councillor Attorney Joey Abu.
Yes, good afternoon, Madam Presiding Officer. Just a reaction to the report of our, the good Councillor. Nasayod ba ang ato ang, the good reporter nga, naatay mga barangays, nga wala manggani signal sa cellphone, kanapakahang internet? We would like, no, na ma-encourage, but to say that mandatory, ano mangkaayok eh, you have to provide first the internet services dito sa mga barangays nga wala'y mga internet. Unta, before ka nag-proposed ang any ordinance sa, unsa may mga, unsa'y mga barangay, sa ato aderis sa Kageyan di Oro City out of the, mga 80 kabarangay na sa Kageyan, ang tanaw ni mo nga wala'y signal sa internet.
Daghan.
Daghan pa. Naaba na sila'y mga computer. Pilakabuk barangay, ang naabay computer wala. So, imo ba na siyang i-research any atong good reporter? Walang na siya, Madam Presiding Officer. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Councillor Gurli Balaba. Yes, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu.
Thank you again, Madam Presiding Officer. I join the manifestation of the good Councillor Gurli Balaba because particularly in District 1, medyo apiki gka'yo ang signal sa interland barangays. Lisudgani kayo makunta kung tao nga, datoga pamuyo. That could be a challenge to these barangay councils and Sanggungiyang Kabataan councils located in this portion. I believe also in District 2, medyo apiki siguro yapon ng FS Katariko?
Asa Balubal.
Balubal. And even sa mayang mga sintrong nga murag, apik, nagyapon mga spot, yapon, dery siguro sa mga rural barangays nga apiki kayo, perhaps siguro in the ag. And as to the comment, as to, before we approve the annual budget of per barangays, they should submit a copy that they have complied with the said requirement. Da, nga madapat mag-live stream sila. That could be an infringement of their local autonomy of per barangay because every local governing unit has a fiscal autonomy as to their budget. And I think one of those requirements before the City Council will approve the budget of per barangay, there is no requirement as to compliance or making it mandatory for them to conduct a live stream. That all, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much, Councillor Attorney Joey Abu. Yes, Councillor, Majority Councillor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Dilikadu na, that's a violation of the local autonomy law of local governments. Pwede tilim ak advice kita pero, na'ta making it as an ordinance. Kay, if you read the local government code, the barangays di, is a local government unit, and it has its own independence.
Independence.
To ask them, to demand from them to do this, to do this and to do that.
Yeah.
It's a violation of that mandate of the law. So ayaw, tanaw si na'to na. Ay, ipanalay siyang barangay, to good barangay. There is a requirement in local government code that all barangays should be, we are making our own law, Madam Chair. If we can do that, then we can do other things. We can demand many things from the barangays, and that would disregard the importance of the local, the autonomy of the local government units. But anyway, considering that is coming from good Councillor, let's refer that back to the
Legal ng barangay. Councillor Alam Lim and Councillor Kenneth Sakala.
Let's review the legality and propriety of that proposed ordinance later. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Yes, Councillor Roger Abadai.
Thank you very much, Sir, Madam Chair. Muriak lang kuke na'apil madegos ako autor dinis sa ordinance. Just to support the principal author. Anyway, it is also in the local code that every barangay or every LGU must put up a transparency board or transparen sa ilang mga activities niya, labina ang gining giunsan nila, pagpadagan nilang ng guberno sa ilang panalapi. So, dinis sa, at kanangingon ng District 1, unguing karoon ang pag-install sa mga gining communication system, gining dito, uban palayango, na nag-converged, tura dito sa interlandso. So, this is one way also of encouraging our public officials like the barangay official to be transparent to their constituents. This might not be a form of ordinance, but I would like to request the co-author but urging lang yoro, a resolution, or urging all barangay officials, if possible, they have to, kwano, they have to make their sessions or meeting online for the information of their constituents. That is my suggestion, if my principal author is okay.
Okay, thank you very much, Councillor Roger Abadai. Yes, Councillor Bernice Parza, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Presiding Officer, Sarang Tanan May Hapon. Madam Chair, on the, on the comment regarding sa internet, I would agree nga, lisurgid ang sa interlands karoon. Pero maybe, kumbasin lang kay, eto pa manatunin sa komitiba on the legalities, but on the ano lang sa pag-live, because I know the good reporter just want lang mangguna makita sa katawan siyang constituents kung sa'gina dibatihan, unsa'gina argue, unsa'ginasabutan sa barangay. On that particular problem, kung internet man lang, maybe, if makalusot malanggaling, pwede ramampun na'to nga require nga dilim man live, but at least later na ay uploading of a certain, dilim ang kailangan daku kay nga requirements po. Pwede ramampun na mag-record sila, kamolog session, kewa, manggi internet hinay man. Then later, dayon after sa session, ilan din i-upload sa social media, which is pwede na nilabuhaton. Because again, ang may point Because again, ang may, may point, Madam Presiding Officer, is, ang gusto lang sa good reporter is lang makita sa katauhan ang mga diskusyon sa ilang mga barangay officials. Daghan salamat, Madam.
Thank you very much, uh, Counselor Bernice Parsha. Yes, Counselor Attorney James Judith, you have the floor.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Inanilang, uh, sa summation motong pasensya na Majority Floor Leader, na ulahiko sa pagabot dini, kay nakasturyan ako ang usas sa mga konsihal sa Iluilo City, og siya ang akong gisangunan sa maubaling draft sa akong kining, kining kabahin sa requirement sa atong mga 80 ka barangay o SK sa ilang gitawag nga live feed or video recording. Klaro na ko, ang sa akong draft, mabitaw nga giripen na to sa Joint Committee sa barangay appears, sugyuta appears, kay pwede na to ipangrepaso katong concerning, Consuelo Gurli Balaba, katong bahin niya sa internet, uh, sa signal, naanana akong address sa mong draft. Pasensya lang, wala, kanapun nataga, kay dili man ikaw isa sa mga, sa authors. So, pero akong, ako parang nga ma, matagaan ang tanan, isa na sa akong sayop, so ako nang ihatag bali sa inyo tanan. Kay ang draft na to tulokabok. Atong principal draft nga ako nang nahatag, nadason sa buhatan ni konsihal, uh, ni, ni Boss Torx, moto ang una, natay gitawag nga first draft, natay second draft, unta third draft, na incorporateong concerning, Consuelo Gurli Balaba, og ni konsihal, uh, Joey Abu kabahin sa internet signal. Ung ya dayon, kabahin sa legalities katong concerning, Majority Floor Leader Edgar Cabanlas, na address na po na na to sa atong first draft. Inkaso mabikil na ay mga problema sa gitawag na to principal draft sa committee level, naadain ko'y, naadain ko'y ipuli nga gitawag na to first draft, or second draft, or third draft, huntod nga mapaina, mapinal, huntod ma-perfect na to ang mga revisions na unsa'yo mga inputs kikinalan sa atong gitawag nga requirement, ang proposed ordinance, nga dunay transmission or gitawag na to, dili giringon kinalan live nga transmission, kung dili video recording sa tanan nga mga sesyon diha sa, sa SK, og sa barangay. So, kanang tanan, ako na nang naaddress sa ato baling tulokadrafts plus gitawag na to nga principal draft, nga bagpo lang na to gidason sa buhatan ni Boss Torx sa atong City Council Secretary. Daghang salamat.
Thank you very much. Ed, rather, did you do public consultation with the barangay captains? They need that, because dili biya lalibimong in live na sila, they're not even, uh, oriented with parliamentary, nya, sawayon lang sila, maka, dili ba ako, malueta. So, if this, if you are pushing on this, let's make sure that they are prepared to face, no, people, the criticism and everything. Actually, uh, wala panggintahan ay balaud, no? In fact, what we did before is that we posted na mo sa gawas, sa among mga, ang among annual expenses. Somehow, probably, uh, who knows, no? Yes, Counselor Gurli Balaba?
Yes, I agree, um, Madam, uh, Presiding Officer, Madam Chair. Um, there are barangays, no, na gamayrapod ang tao. Um, kini manggood, um, we try as much as possible, no, na ang internet is somehow ga, 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 papalayo, no? Even a family na sitting together in a dining table, wala ganika historya, kitungod kinaatanan sa gadgets. So, ato dari is, um, we need a proactive na community. So, they, they know na, uh, na ay mga sessions ang mga barangay. So, kung if they want to get involved, they should attend. Attend physically dito sa ilahang sesyon, and not just rely on the internet. Kay makatapul manggo ng internet, usahay pa mulagi na, they'd be, um, they'd be, uh, um, uh, kining exposed to criticism, bashing, unsa bar, kay mulagi, siguro uban na mga barangay captains, na dili pagidkaayok, or mga ibang barangay kagawads, nga they, they don't know the, kanyang mga processes na usay na paymasulti na dili. Diba? Murag, ano lang siguro, uh, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you very much, Counselor Attorney Gurli Balaba. Okay, let's proceed, the Counselor, Majority Floor Leader, Counselor Attorney Edgar Cabanlas.
Uh, thank you very much. What is important there is public, there is public. The decision is in public. Uh, okay, so let's proceed with our, uh, with our business of the day. Item number one, proposed resolution number 2024-598, returning to barangay council of barangay 14, the city, its ordinance number, oh, ke Torx? Omnibus, omnibus motion, Torx, one, two, three, four,
Taman, item twelve.
Six, up to twelve, up to twelve.
For omnibus approval of items one to twelve. Item one is proposed resolution number 2024-598, returning to the barangay council of barangay number fourteen, the city, its ordinance number 002, series of 2023, covering its supplemental budget number one for calendar year 2023 with an estimated income of 216,771 pesos. Item two is proposed resolution number 2024-599, returning to the barangay council of barangay number six, the city, its ordinance number one, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 2,965,750 pesos. Item three is proposed resolution number 2024-600, returning to the barangay council of barangay number sixteen, the city, its ordinance number 001-2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,061,494 pesos. Item four is proposed resolution number 2024-601, returning to barangay council of barangay number nineteen, the city, its ordinance number 003, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,381,395 pesos. Item five, proposed resolution number 2024-602, returning to the barangay council of barangay number twenty-three, the city, its ordinance number 24-001, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 4,346,419 pesos. Item six is proposed resolution number 2024-603, returning to the barangay council of barangay Tignapuloan, the city, its ordinance number 001, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for CY 2024 with an estimated income of 8,320,562 pesos. Item seven, proposed resolution number 2024-604, returning to the barangay council of barangay Lumia, the city, its ordinance number four, that's 2023, series of 2023, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 38,731,920 pesos. Item eight is proposed resolution number 2024-605, returning to the barangay council of barangay Patag, the city, its ordinance number 01-001-2024, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for CY 2024 with an estimated income of 21,177,404 pesos. Item nine is proposed resolution number 2024-606, returning to barangay council of barangay Iponan, the city, its ordinance number one, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for CY 2024 with an estimated income of 31,275,009 pesos. With item ten, proposed resolution number 2024-607, returning to the barangay council of barangay Lapasan, the city, its ordinance number 001, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 46,804,185 pesos. Item eleven is proposed resolution number 2024-608, returning to the barangay council of barangay number thirty-six, the city, its ordinance number one, that's 2024, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,382,952 pesos. Item twelve is proposed resolution number 2024-609, returning to the barangay council of barangay number ten, the city, its ordinance number 001-2024, series of 2024, covering its annual budget for calendar year 2024 with an estimated income of 3,785,976 pesos, with the information that seat ordinances are operative in their entirety.
Madam Chair, may I request Counselor Yan Lam Lim be recognized.
Counselor Alam Lim, you're recognized.
Madam Chair, everything, uh, everything is in order. I move for the proposed approval resolution number 2024-51598, uh, proposed resolution 2024-599, 2024-600, 2024-601, 2024-602, 2024-603, 2024-604, 2024-605, 2024-606, 2024-607, and 2024-608, and the last 2024-609.
In a second.
Second.
Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number thirteen, Madam Chair. Proposed ordinance number 2024-371, authorizing the Nrogbo City Mayor, Rolando Aue, representing the city government Kageyendoro to enter into and sign the settlement agreement with the Dito Delic Community Corporation, represented by its director for construction, acquisition and permitting Benedicto El Lacamana, covering the restoration project for coral reef that was damaged by the installation of Dito's submarine fiber optic cable in barangay Bunbon, the city, amounting to 1.4 million. Under the terms and conditions stipulated, may I request Counselor, uh, Ayana Chas to be recognized.
Counselor Ayana Chas, you're recognized.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, everything is in order. I move for the approval of to, uh, ordinance number 2024-371.
In a second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number fourteen, proposed ordinance number 2024-372, accepting the offer of Villamar Subdivision Homeowners Association, Inc., represented by its president, Mr. Nikili Totamayo, to turn over to the city government Kageyendoro, the open spaces, streets, uh, streets and reneges of Villamar Subdivision located in barangay Iponan, the city, in accordance with the subdivision laws, rules and regulations, and authorizing the city mayor to sign the corresponding deed of donation thereof, may I request, uh, Counselor Joey Abu to be recognized.
Counselor Attorney Joey Abu, you're recognized.
Move for the approval of the said proposed ordinance, Madam Chair.
In a second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Number fifteen, proposed ordinance number 2024-373, accepting the offer of Villa Flora Subdivision, Phase II Homeowners Association, Inc., represented by its president, Mr. Rexar Ranua, to turn over to the city government Kageyendoro, the open spaces, road lots, deniges of Villa Flora Subdivision, Phase II, located in barangay Gugman, the city, in accordance with the subdivision laws, rules and regulations, and authorizing the city mayor to sign the corresponding deed of donation thereof, may I request Counselor Gurli Balaba to be recognized.
Counselor Gurli Balaba, you're recognized.
I move for the approval of proposed ordinance number 2024-373.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Item sixteen, proposed ordinance number 2024-374, granting exemption for, from payment of a missioning tax to the Savior, to Savior University Glee Club, represented by its president, Mr. Charles Francis Ladera, covering its concert to be held on February 3, 2024, at Savior University Immaculate Conception Church, the city. May I request Counselor Roger Abaday be recognized.
Counselor Roger Abaday, you're recognized.
Considering that the, uh, asking for exemption has a noble purpose, I move to approve the proposed ordinance number 2024-374.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Uh, for inclusion, Madam Chair, may move that item seventeen A and B be, be included in our agenda.
In a second. Objection? I, objection. Comment? Second. Second objection, I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Uh, item seventeen A, uh, and B, proposed resolution number 2024-610, earnestly requesting the Department Transportation and the Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, CAAP, the fast track expansion project and upgrading of Legendingan International Airport. B, proposed resolution number 2024-611, earnestly requesting the Sangunian Plalawigan Musa Misya, to, to make representation, uh, to support, to support, to support, uh, this, uh, or the ordinance of the city, of the city council, uh, to the Department of Transportation and Civil Aviation, na benar, the Aeronautics, Civil Aviation Authority of the Philippines, CAAP, to expedite expansion upgrading of our Legendingan International Airport. Move for its approval, move for its approval.
In a second. Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
Move to approve second final reading.
Second. Objection? I hear none, motion is here by carried.
There being no other matter to take up, move to adjourn, Madam Chair.
Session adjourn, God bless us all. One hour at a baron. No? Four o'clock. Sa ato pag 2:30 mang sugod, man atag 3.